Sorry, I'm a little windy. Okay, oh.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I got a little windy in the fighting team. Sorry, I dropped everybody.
It's easier to do when it's coming.
That was my third fighting activity today.
Really?
So I just like smile.
You can come and I have a study time. Talk fighting.
Congrats.
This is Lily. We've got small hands.
You don't know what's your panic.
There you go.
The meeting is called the order. Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Miller, roll call. Eric Morgan.
Present.
April Hallford. Present. Darcy Cody. Here. Greg Strumka.
Here.
Jeff Conaway.
Here.
Danielle.
Here.
And Mindy is, she is teleporting in?
She is teleporting in.
Yep, I'm here remotely.
Axel Lynn. And Nikki Miller's here.
Thank you. Um, agenda adjustments. I have one. Uh, we are going to move the student board report to item number seven. Any other adjustments? Any other adjustments? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor of the agenda with the adjustment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Uh, announcements. Uh, we have one date change for the June, uh, regular board meeting. Um, it is currently supposed to be on the nineteenth. That is Juneteenth, so we can't meet that day, so we're going to move it to the eighteenth. So mark your calendars.
We don't need a motion for that?
No. Any other announcement? Okay, we have a guest here to do a presentation for the board. Mr. Thomas Reif. He is a seventh grader. And, uh, take it away, Thomas.
Alright, thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Tommy Reif, and I'm a scout here in troop thirty-three. Um, I will earn my life rank on May twenty-seventh, and I will be eligible to start my Eagle Scout project. At that time, my goal tonight is to explore and develop my project idea and planning. For my Eagle Scout project, I would like to build a bike skills park in La Crescent on school district property using the land surrounding Abel. The reason I want to do this is because I have a very strong passion for the outdoors and I love nature. I would also love to get kids outside and off the streets. A couple of summers ago, I attended a week-long biking camp at the YMCA. I fell in love with mountain biking. And during that summer, I went to the La Crosse area mountain bike team. I met and I was surrounded by a great group of people that focus on fierce atmosphere. Fun, inclusive, equitable, and civically engaged. I am proud to be on this team. And I wanted to share my love of biking and the outdoors with the people here in La Crescent. Main goal of an Eagle Scout project is not to be the one who necessarily does the physical work. But the purpose of an Eagle Scout project is to be able to demonstrate planning, development, and leadership to others in a service project, up until any religious institution, school, or community. As we talk tonight, I will share my ideas with you on how to plan, develop, and lead this project idea to success. I'm hopeful that when the week of May twenty-eighth comes, I'll be granted your permission to proceed. Many people live in neighborhoods where kids don't have a safe place to learn to ride a bike. So they end up trying to learn on the sidewalk or on the streets. In a neighborhood with a bike skills park, kids can learn to ride in the area just created for that. Open spaces allow for better sidelines for parents to watch their kids, so that everyone is safe. There's added motivation for kids to learn to ride a bike since they're witnessing other kids riding and having fun. Your kids may improve their social skills while building confidence in their own abilities. Bike skills parks have benefits that kids don't even think about, such as getting kids outside, learning balance, gaining strength, focusing and competing tasks, and interacting with other kids. A study conducted by Outrides summarized data from its middle-school-based bicycling education program. Bicycling has the power to better engage students, helping them build new skills while supporting their physical and mental health. Regular cycling promotes physical fitness, strengthens muscles, and boosts the immune system. It also develops excellent balancing skills, enhancing coordination and control over body movements. Engaging a cycling enhances focus and concentration, benefiting academic performance and cognitive abilities. So what is a bike skills park? A bike skills park is a collection of bike-optimized features in a fun and easily repeatable environment. As kids navigate their way around the bike park features, they improve their balance, coordination, strength, and bike handling skills. Plus, they're outdoors and they're off the streets. A thoughtfully-designed skills park includes a variety of options for different skill levels, which can be used by kids on balance bikes and kids on pedal bikes. Teens and adults can also enjoy this environment while they focus on a few laps and focus on their skill features to look to improve their bike handling skills. Uh, I think we're a slide up. Sorry, thank you. Uh, so how is a skills area different than the trails? Uh, bike skills park is purposely designed with areas that have a gravel or dirt surface and various technical or challenging elements. Children especially benefit from this type of free-form, unscripted activity. Ben Preston, a P.E. teacher and bike team coach, explains how the bike park came about. When I took this job here about four years ago, I became the bike coach for the after-school bike program. At the time, there was a small system of trails already on school property. So we started to clean it up and use it as a facility for riding bikes after-school kids. In December of twenty-nineteen, I contacted the principal and the district superintendent, and I said I'd be really interested in developing this into what's called a bike park or pump track, so we could develop skills and have something fun for the kids to do after-school. At the time, when I was looking around, I was looking at my students, and who are all middle-schoolers, and they're kind of at a loss for what to do with themselves around town during the day. They're not high-schoolers, they don't have cars. A lot of times, they're stuck here in the summer. And they really want to challenge themselves in healthy ways. And I've seen bike parks in other communities help kids do something that's creative, that's functional, that's exercise, that's really good for them. Richard Do, Drew, Dayton Cycling Coach, said, "It speaks to the progressive nature of the school and what they want to accomplish." Not all students will become professional mountain bikers, but learning to handle a bike will expose them to various benefits that come with physical fitness and being outdoors. Plus, it's possible to meet all kinds of people you might not otherwise come across. So all of these walls break down. I reached out to each of these schools and to the foundations that work with them. One of the foundations working on these has already built three bike skills parks on school property and has a fourth one in the pre-design stage. So far, they've all been open to the public. For those that aren't open until later in the day, it is because the schools have their own mountain bike teams and use the skills parks for their practices. Those without mountain bike teams are open regardless of school hours. It was also mentioned that many project donors might not provide donations unless the skills park is open to the public and more available than just after-school. Only one school has their bike park fenced off, but that's because their biggest issue is with kids riding dirt bikes and motorcycles around the area. Suggestions and advice included: Spend the money on professional design. Lots of well-placed signage and rules. Assign ratings. Use professional services when you can. Companies like Trek and IMBA know how to do this. It also removes a huge liability away from the school. Trek did all the signage for some of the schools. When it comes to liability, they said this all depends on the school's specific policy and state law. It was also mentioned that by having a professional, uh, company create the bike park, a huge amount of liability was removed. Maintenance of these bike parks is predominantly done by students themselves, which encourages riders to take responsibility for their school's resources and give back to the community. I put together a separate document that includes the Minnesota recreational land use statute, the review of the La Crescent-Hopey use of school district facilities and equipment, and the protection provided by Scouts VSA to help address concerns that pertains to liability. The plan would need to have someone like IMBA complete all concept planning and design so that multiple options can be provided to the school board and so final professional renderings can be supplied. ADA accessible features would take into account proper width, slope, and condition of treated surface. Until we know how long this design plan will take, we really don't know when construction will begin or how long it will take. I just wanted to point out the steps I have to follow for the Eagle Scout program and when the project is allowed to begin. Based on all the space around and behind Abel, I think it's safe to estimate that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars would be needed. My hope would be to see a connected trail to the parking area, a beginner pump track, an intermediate and advanced pump track, and a skills trail with rock and timber features. I have many friends, partners, and advocates on my side that will help me get the word out and work on the features to fundraise. Having professional design boards will also make it easier to talk to high-end donors. I will also apply for grants. There are a lot of grants that exist for something like this. Ardi, my contact at IMBA, has access to a database of grants. She's offered to help me locate grants that would qualify for this project. I love the biking community and have built many relationships. I'm excited to work with them and to make this happen.
Thank you, Thomas. Good job, Thomas. So I did let Thomas know there may be some questions from board members or admin. Um, does anyone have any questions for him at this time?
What's the liability piece you mentioned with Boy Scouts of America?
So, the Boy Scouts of America have protection against some of the liability, and therefore, also with our state law and the school district law, um, if you give out an oral and written document saying that you do not need to charge a fee or no fee is required to be in the bike skills park, then it will also get rid of that liability. So if someone gets hurt, you're not liable.
I'm very impressed with your knowledge on everything. Um, for those other schools that have some that you've contacted, who maintains them?
It is always or mostly done by the students or the riders. And it has worked out very well with all of them, and they can't find any problems that go along with it.
Tony, along with that maintenance piece, is some of your connections, is there like grant funding available to help with maintenance, besides the Bron and Cobb?
So, the grants will supply grants to us for money so that we can, um, bring in maybe heavier equipment or to bring volunteers or to maintain the trails, because we can't maintain them without proper tools or proper volunteers.
So your hope is to raise all of that money?
Yep.
There's another organization in La Crosse called Beer By Bike Brigade, who is a very passionate biking community. Um, I know they're not on your fundraising ideas, but they just hold a lot of fundraising.
I had contacted the Beer By Bike Brigade, and they were not interested in what I was trying to do.
Thomas, when are you hoping to have a decision by the school district?
I will, uh, need signatures or be able to have signatures by May twenty-eighth. I'm still in my star rank, and only when I'm in life rank will I be able to get a signature for the proposal and be able to move on with my project.
Any other questions from the board? You did a great job.
Well done.
Thanks.
Thank you, Thomas. You did a wonderful job. We will be in touch. And you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the board meeting, or you can run home as fast as you want.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next we're going to hear the student board report from Lily.
Alright, so, a lot has happened since the last time Mr. Coleman read my email. Um, we had an SCLA week last week. I saw a lot of student participation. Um, SCLA week was kind of just acknowledging our SCLA club. And so we did a lot of dress-up days, and again, a lot of participation. I like to see the school spirit. Uh, and another event that we have coming up is our blood drive hosted by community leadership, run by Mr. Bron. Um, that'll be March eleventh, and that's only open to students and staff. Um, an update on our Lancer Locker or like our food shelf in the school. It's going pretty well. I'm assuming Student Council is going to host another food drive coming up at the end of the year to maybe get free stuff and some of those items. Um, sports playoffs are starting, actually tomorrow. Girls' basketball is in California tomorrow. Boys' hockey is home tomorrow playing Winona. And boys' basketball will start next week. Um, what I've kind of noticed in the school or just with the seniors coming towards the end of our year, we're all kind of becoming like really connected, and it's really just fun to see like everyone wanting to be more together. I mean, better late than never, so. There we go. And with the, I just want to give you guys some input about I've been hearing from the students about the, like, new year schedule stuff. Um, I've heard a lot of mixed reviews. I know a lot of people might be upset about cutting the summer short this next year. But I've also heard a lot of confusion on maybe like why this is happening or anything like that. So just to give you guys something, but, and I think that's all I have about what is going on in the school.
Okay, any questions for Lily?
Is there items needed currently for the closet or the, um, food shelf that we have at school?
I'll have to check with Mr. Bron on that. I know he runs that, and I didn't get a chance to talk to him today, so. I'll let you know.
It's pretty good. I mean, we had a really successful food drive, so there's nothing that's like there right now.
Are there like textile or, um, product type stuff that is imperishable that is needed?
We're still talking about how do we expand it to be clothing and some of those items as well.
Sure.
That's still in discussion.
Sounds great.
How's the usage been?
It's steadily growing. I mean, it's one of those things we knew it would start really slow. But we're up to, I don't know, but there are multiple families that typically have students coming to pick up stuff on a regular basis.
That's great. Lily, I heard the winter dance was canceled. Was that called?
Uh, yeah, our winter formal got canceled this last week. Um, our SCLA group was supposed to be selling tickets last week, but there is a miscommunication and everything with that. And so there wasn't enough, kind of, I don't even think there was enough interest in the dance really for them to continue on to try to push this to go. Sorry, did you hear that?
Yeah, and do we have a date for the boys' basketball?
I have not got one yet. Probably soon.
Thank you. Good job, Lily. Okay, you are also welcome to stay, but free to leave. Thank you, Lily. Okay, um, is there anyone here for, to give a public comment unrelated to the calendar? Because then I have a formula. Okay, I know. So we will move into the, uh, public hearing portion of our meeting. Um, this will be different than if you've given public comments at a board meeting. Those are limited to two minutes and they're not interactive. This is kind of the opposite, um, so, um, please don't take like too long. But, um, you can ask questions. It's interactive. Mindy's on the phone from, um, and then admin is here to answer questions. Um, we do have a microphone. Everyone will get a chance to ask your questions. Um, so if you just want to raise your hand, and then whoever has the microphone can ask your questions. Um, and then we will do our best to respond. Any concerns or questions about that approach? Everyone good? Alright, who would like to go first? Okay, the microphone's up here.
Sure. Um, I just wanted to be clear on the reason that there was another survey that came out. So by nature, I am a helper and a problem solver, and I attended the first informational meeting, and there was, um, some questions that were unable to be answered. There was the question of when is the staff going to be surveyed? When are we going to get our input? And that question was not answered. As well as, if I'm going to complain about something, I want to be part of the solution. So I created a survey that I thought was very non-bias. I went to my union board to get support, um, from that, so I didn't overstep boundaries, and, um, sent it out where they could put their benefits and concerns in there for all the ABCs that are presented as positive for this calendar. Um, and there is no lie that trust isn't issue in our district. So coming from someone of non-administration, I wanted to be completely transparent. Um, I sent all those results out to everybody in the high school, middle school, and elementary, as well as you guys received those, I'm assuming, through the link there as well. Um, so my point was not to be like stepping over toes. It was just to be part of the solution. A lot of the concern here is that we had six weeks of hearing about this to the time you guys voted on it. That's inadvertent. Why is this getting pushed through? We barely get time to put in our, our input on this. Um, if there is such huge benefits, can't we wait another year? Eighteen months? Let us think on this. Let us grab data. There's no data that was able to be presented. So the urgency is really hard, um, to get pushed through. And then, what is the solution we're trying to solve? Because it feels as if we maybe are solving a solution for one small area of people but are creating five other problems in return. And so I just don't feel as a problem-solution person that that is the right thing to do about it.
So staff did get the original survey, right? The same survey that-
Hidden in a very unclear email. So only after my survey started going out did people at the board, we had another survey. And I, yeah, I encouraged them. Yeah, it said it's in there. It's actually way at the bottom, that time from the crane. Yep, that's the survey you're supposed to get. Um, so just lately, like this last three days, did staff realize that they even had another survey to answer?
So, because like I, as a parent, received this email from the school district, and then it said, "Pick if you're a student, a staff, or a parent." Is that the one the staff got?
Yeah.
From the district, not yours?
From the district.
It's all one email that went out at the same time. The bullet point email.
Okay. Thank you.
Same with the results for your survey?
Twenty-five pages.
Oh, I saw that one.
Totally transparent. I did not take off the benefits. I left all of it in there. There are benefits.
And it was two-thirds of people were opposed to it?
I didn't do that data. I just, there's-
There's two different surveys, Jeff. Yeah, one is the district survey.
I didn't have them vote at all of yes or no, um, because there is a lot more information needed in order for that vote to happen. It's not just a clear yes before Labor Day, no before Labor Day. There's gray. I think we can all come together and gather information and what will work for the majority of our community and staff and students. I feel that this is getting pushed through with the possibility of some underlying reason that we're not sure of. The untrust in this district is maybe not earned. It might be just inherited because of the turnover in staff or the turnover in administration. That's not fair, but it is what it is. There's untrust. And so when administration is asking for input, there's fear in putting your name out there.
The district survey was anonymous.
And when did that fall?
The Friday before the first hearing.
About seven weeks before you guys have to vote.
So we as a board have been talking about this at different meetings for probably the last year and a half. Just bringing it up, talking about pros and cons, talking about the different options that Minnesota has that you can apply for. So I didn't want you to feel like it was just, just pushed here with a secret agenda. We've kind of just brought it up casually a couple of times. It was brought up.
What was the push? What's the reason? That's the lesson. You're not giving the why. Why is this coming up?
Okay. Administration is who is proposing the options for the calendar. We as a board said that we were open to hearing feedback from the community and staff on whether they were for or against making the change. That's where we landed on it. And here we are.
We weren't opposed to hearing the information.
Right.
We just didn't want to make a vote until we heard from everyone else.
Right. Okay, uh, who else have questions?
I have a question. I guess, I, I just want to know, and I'm like to grab my book. Um, state statute, I mean, I'm not professional in state statute by any means. But state statute says that all parties should be involved. Uh, you know, um, like the certified staff, non-certified staff, community members. And I understand you sent out the survey. I did fill out the survey that was at the bottom, and I gave my input in that as both a parent and a staff member. And I encouraged my, uh, older students to fill it out as well. Um, so I saw that at all, but then I thought to myself, wow, I don't have enough, I mean, there's a lot of information in that, which is great. But where's the, like, out-to-the-community informational meetings? there's a lot of information in that, which is great, but where's the like out to the community informational meetings or something? I I-
That's what this is. There's free public hearing.
Okay, but we're six weeks from from making a decision. This is a huge change to our community. Huge. Have we talked to churches? Have we talked to community ed? Have we talked to parks and rec? Have we talked to the city? Have we, I mean, like, we're, this is huge. Have you have you had conversations? We were in conferences last week with parents asking us questions and we couldn't answer it because we don't have enough information. If the school board's been talking about this for a year and a half, then I would think that staff, we should have been having these conversations of staff members. Your, the staff in this district did not know about this until that survey went out. At the same time, the community found out. That's why there's mistrust. You have to get your staff with you. If you want to empower and lead, you've gotta bring us with you and be transparent. So that's unfortunate. And I mean, it may be a really good thing. I I don't know enough about it. But where is the communication and the transparency within this district? The only way we move forward as a district is to build that and have trust. And if you hear that you've talked about it for a year and a half and our administration hasn't had those conversations with staff members, that's a problem.
Okay, any additional questions, comments?
Sure.
I'm loud by nature. I'm Chris. I'm a parent. Um, I just had a couple of general questions. It sounds like kinda goes along with the theme that I'm hearing so far is hearing some of this information initially and I saw the survey that went out. Um, just as a parent, I have some of the questions around the community in terms of impact. And I guess in general, what's the origin of this ask to make a schedule adjustment? I can kinda see pros and cons. Just my own personal um evaluation of the, but you know, at the end of the day, I can't help but think of impacts to families when you're looking at a potential three-week adjustment. Um, even just from good old American tradition, summer vacations, um, getting ready for for school year. Uh, you got kids that are athletes as they get older. I'm I'm a former athlete myself. They're already committed to summer programs and early practices. And then at the end of the day, why are we here? This is a s- school board meeting. Um, my concern, I guess as a parent, is I've been very fortunate and blessed to, you know, have our kids in this district. And I think the key to that is good personnel and staff. It sounds like they haven't really been brought into the loop on this and fully explored. I think that's maybe an underlying concern that's maybe bigger than just that topic, but I'm just one person. I'm just taking the information I've received. So I guess I'd like to know, what's the origin of this ask? Where'd it come from? Where'd it spawn from and why? And what are the tangible benefits that justify getting to this point? And then two, what's what's everybody's thoughts on it? It sounds like the most critical component, staff, that all our kids see, we're lucky to have them see, haven't really had a full chance to be vetted, so my two cents. Unless I'm missing something. That's just kinda what I'm gathering from a third party here.
Thank you.
Would this informational video answer any questions or are we gonna play this stuff? Nope.
It was sent out to us.
That was the email that people received.
I'll just go. As I'm Katie, I am a teacher and a parent in the district. I think I might be one of the few that is a fan of the adjusted calendar. Please don't interrupt me. Uh, so I like the one-week adjust, just my own personal and as a preschool teacher views. Um, but I would also agree that we're looking at six months from now. And a lot of people have six months from now planned out, so to me, that's not realistic. But I would love the idea for the following year for an adjustment start.
One thing I, I mean, a lot of this doesn't have to happen this year to next year. This is just opening the doors to change. And we're here gathering information so we can make a decision.
And I believe that change is hard for all people, so that's why I think that that longer amount of time and more transparency, of course, would be beneficial, but I I kinda like change.
Yeah, and I'll just piggyback on my statement. I didn't say I was opposed in any sense of that.
Yep.
It's just uh seems like a pretty drastic change in a short amount of time without a lot of tangible benefits outlined. I guess in in all parties considered is my point. I agree. I like the one-week, yeah. And it sounded like the details that I had access to, if there was an insinuation that it's already being approved at least two, two weeks. But that that's just the tone I got again as a third party that it's already been pushed through or will be.
Is Mindy gonna respond to it? Mindy, do you wanna respond to it?
Well, that I heard by name.
Can you hear what they're asking? Did you wanna respond to?
Yeah, I can, I can respond. I have some just enough time already.
I think you're coming in and out a little, Mindy.
Yeah. Echoing back to my-
Hang on. I gotta mute us.
Computer here. I'm not sure why.
Brittany's waving her wand.
So I'll just talk and I can see Nikki and Derek and Greg really well there. So just wave if you can't understand me if I just blast through this. Okay. Um, basically, this has been brought up and talked about as board members have said for multiple meetings over the two years I've been here now and near two years. Um, this is put out for exploration. And we talked about it at staff development, district-wide staff development meetings. We've talked about it at um other district-wide meetings that I'm involved in. I'm not exactly sure why communications haven't gone back to all of the features through some of those areas. Um, but this has been something we've been looking at. And the reason we started looking at it is because multiple parents and students, um, et cetera have approached and said during things like our strategic direction, when we were doing the parent interviews for desired daily experiences, the desire to have a spring break every year. And that our students really knew that. The ability to make sure that we get out every year in May and not have to go in June. Well, those of you who haven't done calendars before have probably not encountered years like this next school year. When Christmas and New Year's Eve fall on a Wednesday, you have to have a two-week break for Christmas, which when you're going halfway into January to end first semester, then you have to go into June to get the requisite hundred and seventy-four days for students to have. And that's the reason that the traditional calendar went into June, is because there are just not enough dates to complete that when you have to have those two weeks. And the reason you have to have two weeks is because by both master agreements and individual contracts, the staff has Christmas Eve and Christmas Day as vacation. And they also have New Year's Eve and New Year's Day as vacation. When those days are Tuesday, Wednesday in the first week and Wednesday, Thursday in the second week, that would leave you a one-day school week with students. And and it would only give us two more days. And those of you who have been in school for a while understand that one-day school weeks are really pretty difficult to do. To say it very mildly. Um, so this is coming out as a response to things that have come to me and the district office and to board members. Um, that's why it started. Now, yes, it's getting close to the, and you know, the decision has to be made by April. We have to get it into the Department of Ed to want to do this for next year by April. But Greg said and other people said it, there's no reason we have to go this year or anything else. You know, we don't have to do a one-week. We don't have to do a two-week this year. We can go with the traditional calendar. But we have to know if we do that, we are probably gonna go into June. And that's not creatively arranging the calendars, just how the year works out. Um, the reason we're having this and the reason we're doing this is because we want the input. I say all of the time that seventy percent of the decisions we make, or I make as superintendent of school, are re-decided. And they're ones where everyone can have a democratic heart in the decision-making. And we decide together what it's gonna be. Thirty percent of the time, there are decisions that ain't been made that are school board or superintendent decisions. In those cases, both groups, the the school board and I, want as much input as we can from community, students, faculty, um, other staff, et cetera. But we have to then weigh that information and make decisions. And calendar is one of those things that is a board set piece. And the board votes on it. And so that's why we're here. That's why we're asking for this. That's why we're gonna have people giving their input. That's why we spent up the survey, because we can't do a lot of community informational things unless we know the questions we're gonna have to answer. And the surveys going out, the reason we have them written the way they were and the reason we gave some of the stuff to begin with that I did in my video was that so people would have a base so that they could put down their concerns and questions. So when we do more education, we can address the concerns specifically. And we can notice the things that potentially we wouldn't have seen. And that comes from more parents and the family background. I I guess does that answer the origin question? And maybe I'll lay a little bit, because there's not a real urgency to this. It's just once you start going down a path, you need to keep going.
And I'll just add on to, um, the board has not made any decisions. Um, if you asked me today, I would say it is too late to make a change like this. We need to take our calendar out so people can plan grad parties and like let's just get a decision made and something out. I think it's way too late to do a change like this on a calendar and more time is needed for a change like that. Um, change is hard for people no matter what. Um, and but we're not voting, we can't vote on it until after the third public hearing. So no decision's been made by the board. We have not voted on it. And um, to be honest, I was neutral about the whole thing and just open to hearing what people wanted. So there's no agenda from the board. It wasn't um anything that we, you know, are pushing for or against. We were just open to hearing what people wanted or didn't want.
And we're required to have those hearings also. It's a requirement, so.
Um, other questions and comments?
I was just gonna say, to me, it sounds like from what she said that it's really only a concern about next year. Is that what I'm hearing? Like because of the Wednesday, Wednesday thing?
I think that's why it was pushed a little faster, but.
Cause the, when the calendars came out, it was like two weeks and then they had planned it like two, three years in advance. And to me, when I saw that, I was like, wow, they're really putting their time into this calendar. This must be what they're intending to keep down the road. And so if this is a question of like just next year, I feel like that should be the discussion, not like I I feel like we're making a decision for all the future years right now.
The goal with gathering some of the input is to be able to put our calendars out there four years in advance. So while there's a big stretch on next year, ideally from here on out, Mindy wants to be able to have them out for families three years in advance, because we don't wanna be stuck ever again with
Yeah.
six months out and people not having any input.
Yeah, that was the only one that wasn't like three years in advance was like the one that we have now wasn't planned out. The one that was three years in advance was the two weeks ahead. So.
And I think she just wanted to show you.
Suggestions on how it would look like if we did fully go to two weeks.
That one was the biggest change, right? Like traditional, there's just one year. One week was just one year. Two weeks, that's the biggest change. So that was foreshadowed a bit more on what that would look like, because that that would be a big adjustment for people. So I don't, I don't think, I wouldn't read any more into it than that was the one with the biggest change.
I mean, like, I I felt a little bit like from looking at the the information that we received, it felt a little like you have to go till June ninth or that, and it, just the way it was presented, just felt kind of misleading. Because I feel like there's definitely a middle ground. I think that there are tons of districts that have tons of great calendars that are already posted out there. We could Google them and print up many different options. Some will be early, some will be traditional like we had, and there'll be some that probably would be maybe leave the middle perfect. But I think that the concern is that it's maybe um to restrict.
Mindy, I have a question. Can you just speak a little bit to what M D E asks in as far as calendars? Is, are they wanting like a two, three, four-year ahead-of-time deal when you present this to them?
Yes. Um, they ask you to give multiple years what this would look like. Um, which is why the two-week calendar, so if you look at the calendars that were posted, there was traditional calendar July twenty-four to June twenty-five. There was L C H proposed one week earlier, flexible, twenty-four through twenty-five. And L C H proposed two weeks early, plus twenty-four through twenty-five. So I gave a scenario for each of the situational for next school year. And yes, as I was looking at it, I did go through and do twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven for the two weeks. Um, and that got included in here. Really what we were focusing on was just the calendar for next year. So that I'm sure did create some miscommunication and some confusion. But really what I wanted people to look at and see is what it would look like in next school year. If we did a traditional, if we did a one week early, and if we did a two week early. And when you turn it into M D E, they're asking for at least three years in advance what that would look like.
Um, Mindy, this is April. I have two questions. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, my first question is, um, for the traditional calendar that was proposed, is it possible to make any edits to the, to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if, well, let me ask my second question. Is there a calendar committee?
Uh, we take the calendars by staff development, but the way I like to do calendars is just sit down with a couple of different people and look through it so that you put together a few options, which is what we did last year. And then we brought it to staff development, which is actually the calendar committee.
Would you be open to having the calendar committee take a look at these?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So I'm Greg and a parent, a student. And when you're looking at this year's calendar versus this proposed next year's calendar, I I'm a little confused as the Christmas break doesn't seem to matter at all from a second semester point of view. This year, we start January twenty-second and we end Thursday, a half a day, May thirtieth. Next year is proposed to start January twenty-first, which is a day earlier. And we end up June sixth. And currently, there's six days off for that second semester for this year. Next year, there's eight days off. So when you kinda figure the math, it appears we're going four and a half days more next year than this year. Or is the calendar incorrect?
And I actually have a question about that too, Mindy. Um, when I look, it's a requirement of one sixty-five days in Minnesota is what I'm seeing. Is that correct? Required student face-to-face days?
There's a required student hour.
So that's four hundred and what? So that's 400 and what, 425 hours or something?
Required student hours is for seventh and 12th grade. There are required hours for lower, for sixth grade and unders, or less than that.
I mean, we cut Wednesdays short. Our Wednesdays are shorter.
Because Wednesdays being shorter? It doesn't give me an hour down here, I was just curious how that all works, so.
And then our flex time only counts one day a week.
What's that?
Our flex in the beginning to the half hour only counts one day a week. Since we allow students to not be there. If they're lanser or whatever. Yeah, because it's, since some kids are allowed to not be there, then it counts as optional time. So we lose two hours a week because of that.
So we potentially are adding days because of that and the shorter ones is?
So it doesn't make sense if this year's and next year's are the same?
Yeah. Danielle?
So, I'm Danielle Springer, I'm a parent. Um, and I happen to be on the Parenting by Three committee, so I got some of this information around like two months ago. Sorry about not knowing exactly how long it takes me to. So I had the opportunity to talk to my kids. I have currently an eighth grader and a lot of 12th grader, as well as several other kids in the high school and not that I was prepared to say today, but I will tell you, the kids are under the impression that it is a done deal and that their opinions didn't matter. So if there's the opportunity to let them know that maybe the surveys and it's not a done deal, so it's worth turning that in, I think that would be valuable because they're feeling like, at least the ones that I talked to, um, that filling out the survey or turning in their information, giving you the feedback didn't really matter. Um, some of that might just be teenager perspective. Um, but I did have the opportunity to hear that some of the benefits would be like getting out, um, in June, matching up more with the college calendar for, um, students who are PSEO. I do have a senior who is PSEO right now. Um, as well as, um, being able to finish first semester at the Christmas break and not have some of those, um, transition days maybe where they're not as effective. And so initially, I'll be real honest, I was like, oh, that totally makes sense. Um, but after talking with kids and really looking at it, I think that I'm left with more concerns or more questions about starting particularly the two weeks early. Um, especially when looking at the sports calendar. I think we can all say as much as we want that like coaches aren't going to say, hey, you need to get in and do this earlier, but the reality is, is that will happen. Um, and so that's really pushing it back even two months, uh, two weeks earlier. So we're really looking at like athletes and those kind of things being back into the school setting early August. And I think that pushes back and really takes out some of that time, most of the, um, summer rec sports. And like at the end of June, or excuse me, the end of July, so, um, and as much as I have many, many athletes in my family, I struggle with like sports taking over family time. But I, I think that there would be a reality is that if we move it back two weeks, the reality is, is that school would start even earlier when we look at like, um, sports and those other things we're getting ready, like the band, prepping for things, all of that would start earlier. Um, I realized when I looked at the calendars, you know, some of that a lot. And Mindy, I appreciate you giving feedback that you've heard from students and other parents and stuff that they want a spring break. Um, I'll just be real honest, I don't think that spring break is really in our best interest. It doesn't, there's no real value in our academic setting to having a spring break. Um, and for parents who can afford to take their children someplace and do something, they're going to do that when it meets their needs, not necessarily when we're off of school. And as a parent who's been there, some years do that, and some years not, right? Like, I, so I will tell you, like, we, we've had spring breaks where the kids are off, but it's more expensive to travel on that, that timeframe, so that's not when I take my kids out of school to do our family stuff. So I would be much more in favor after taking the last six, seven weeks to really look at it, think about it, talk with my kids, to look at being able to start when we traditionally start because as I have lots of, um, athletes in my family that were already back into kind of that school setting in August. And starting even earlier would push it back that much farther into the summer. But then not having a spring break and still, when I do the counts on, um, the days and things like that, I didn't realize there was hours, I counted so that I only knew about the days. So I think it's still very reasonable to end at a decent time if we take out that spring break. Um, yes, if you ask my kids, I think it's cool to have a spring break because they just don't have to go to school. Not because they're really doing anything of value, bettering themselves academically or bettering themselves as humans during that week. If you're a parent, um, who has daycare issue, or have simply daycare, spring break is a really, really tough time. Um, as someone who works, um, not directly anywhere in the child protection system, but within that, we know that spring breaks or those kind of extended times off of school create supervision issues for kids. Um, and I think now, I just heard that flex time is part of what contributes to our hours. Um, I haven't had a chance to talk to my kids about that or anybody else. But I would be much more in favor of saying like, let's take out the ability for kids not to come to school on time just because they're doing well and still be able to end at a decent time. As someone who's a supervisor, I don't say to my staff like, wow, good job. You've done a great job at your job this week, so you don't have to come on time. Like, I don't know that that's necessarily sending the right message to our kids either when they get into the adult world that like, hey, if you do pretty good, you don't have to come to school on time. I think that, you know, our school hours are our school hours and we should expect to get to get there. That's a little ad lib to my thoughts I'm saying. So, um, and now I'll cut them, you just need to go. But, um, I, I think that there are other ways to still accommodate that desire to end at a decent time and still be respectful of when we're starting school without adjusting it back especially two weeks, so. And I, I will be the first to tell you that I've kind of changed my mind over the last like six, eight weeks that I've had to really like look at it, count some of those days, um, talk about things with my kids and other people. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, the extracurricular stuff. I mean, I think what's going to happen as a result of this, you're going to lose participation. You're going to lose kids because of it.
Cause then you're going to have to go at 5:00 AM, 5:00 AM to 7:00.
That actually was one of the questions that just got brought up is because of the sort of the, um, sports season, they do two-a-days, so am I going to have to go to school at 5:00 in the morning just so I can get my two-a-days in?
But winter and spring sports don't do that.
No, and I get that, but we're really looking at that timeframe. And I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not opposed to my kids getting up at 5:00 if they can drive themselves to. That's just suicide.
Question to moving to this schedule, what's the equity for kids that live out of town that can't get to those summer practices with their parents working with them later during the day?
But are you going to guarantee us then that coaches aren't still going to ask for that? Because there's been a lot of like, oh, well, it's a no contact week. And there's captain's practices and my kids still know like, but if I don't show up, I'm going to get penalized.
Those kids are going to miss the bus anyway.
Well, if they practice at 5:00, the bus issue isn't going to help.
Right.
Has nothing to do with anything.
Yeah, so that's, that's a very good point, yeah, if you have an early life. Like, right now, for winter sports, because of gym space, I still, you know, I drive CO in for practice once a week at 6:00 AM. You know, and so like, and I get it, it's tough and I'm, you know, the biggest bleeding heart about like, everybody should be included and I love everyone. Um, but I, I think that when we look at it, the reality is, is that coaches are going to expect kids to start practicing. We, you know, we, we've seen it elsewhere and I understand, we, we talked about Calidonia, I know they have phenomenal sports, we get it, I was at the game last night. Um, but they, they do expect their, their athletes to practice and, and do different things. And it really would be an expectation of starting sports earlier. And, you know, in a couple of the other districts that I've looked into, it just does happen and I believe that it would probably happen here as well.
So do you think just one week earlier, as there's already games that one week, would affect the sports that much?
I mean, I, I think it would be a conscious effort to say then like, we're not going to have that expectation and not even that implication to students, right? And so, um, I, I, I think there are some benefits, like I said, I, um, initially was kind of like, oh, you know, like, we're already into it. But my fear is not that we would be starting earlier, is that the expectations to get ready to start are that much earlier too. And, um, again, I feel like basing it off of spring break, like, I, I just am not a big fan of taking days out of that, like September through, um, the end of the time for a spring break.
And do we think that it matters when Labor Day falls?
I mean, it does, right? Like, just like Mindy said, like, it matters when Labor Day falls, it matters when Christmas falls. Like, those things play an impact. And even being able to say like, okay, maybe like starting the Thursday before or something. But two weeks and even a week is still like, we're kind of pushing that. And if I understand and I've read the statutes, um, or kind of the guidelines correctly, if you get the approval to start before May, um, Labor Day, you get the approval to start before Labor Day. It's not like you're, um, getting approval to start one day or 14 days. And so that.
You can choose.
Right, makes me a little bit hesitant then to be like, okay, are we just opening the door up for in the future?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, kind of counter the, the fall startups. What's, um, one of the bullets in the presentation was that kids don't, may not have a ride. But you're just kicking the can down the road. So in spring sports, when there's actually conferences and sections.
Very good point.
You're just making it worse.
My thought for that was that in the beginning of fall sports, they haven't built those relationships with other teammates yet to maybe carpool. And, um, just in the spring, they're already into the season and maybe have those better relationships to know who they could, um, help get those carpools with. But that was just my thought on that. I understood your, your.
Tracing it, yeah.
And Greg, I'm sorry, I totally overrode your last question. About the, um, the number of days, was eight versus?
There was six days off this year, eight days off next year.
But going later.
We're going six and a half days.
And that's certain, but my guess would be the first semester is shorter.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm not certain, but my guess is that first semester is shorter.
Right, I'm, no, I'm comparing.
Little number of days.
I'm comparing this year's second semester.
Right.
To next year's second semester.
Yeah, and I think that this year's first semester is longer than next year's first semester. So that's where the extra days come in, that we still.
So the days are here, right?
They're just shifted in some sense. I don't know for sure, that'd be my guess.
Can I just ask, cause this was the first time that it was maybe I thought about. So high school gets rid of flex, that shows our whole district's calendar, is that?
High school has the highest.
So our flex is affecting middle school and elementary's days of school, is that what's happening?
The hours requirements are different by the age.
Okay.
So high school has the highest number of hours.
Okay.
So when you set a district calendar, it has to satisfy the school.
So then, yes, the hours are impacting the elementary and middle school.
Yeah.
I'd like to know, it shouldn't those hours be within the time, the 165 days that MBE requires us to be in school then? I mean, isn't that why they're, they're in there? Am I not making holes in it?
We just go more days than required.
We go more days than what is required by MBE already in that line?
And you can set how many hours are in the day.
Some, some snow days too, you know, we got like two or three snow days built in.
Wild kind of is really taking care of that.
Yeah, that's basically not too efficient.
So we're still six days over with the state of Florida.
Have we ever?
I've never seen it days, I've always seen hours required.
Have we ever surveyed staff to see if spring break is helpful or not?
Every year.
Yes. Yes.
We survey you guys?
Yes, in the last, in the last two years, it has been voted down. Not have a spring break. Why not very many?
I would say it's like 48% to 52%, like every year, and I would like to have it.
I was just interested in here.
The hard part about that is that, so you have almost, you're very close to 50, 50% of your staff. So fifty, almost 50% of your staff is wanting a spring break. But we haven't had a spring break for I don't know how many years. So then you have people, you know, I.
I think that's just a bigger conversation about that, but it just makes it.
We need, yeah.
Didn't we used to do it every other year?
Yes.
Very, very long time forward.
I think every four years because of a manager, John Michael, we'll bet about that.
Cause of me.
Once every year, it's not only four years.
But Danielle, I would say, this, we call it hard. This time of year is hard. I'm not adding any more to spring break, but this is a burnout next year.
But I think when we look at it, you might do some research and I certainly don't have aspects or like, um, access to as many like educational like data sets as you. But there's real no academic value and I guess if we look at like, yes, I completely respect what new teachers go through. I have, you know, five kids of my own, I can't imagine 25 plus like eight hours a day. Um, but I also looked at it in the thirds of really any academic value. And so I would be more inclined to like, what can we do for teachers to help make it easier for you to take a spring break with your family when you want to, just like I take a spring break with Mike and not always because of kind of fortify. But, you know, like, what can we do to help support them? Because I do think from a teacher standpoint, you need that. I completely get, I mean, I spend most of my day working with like kids who you all identify as the really naughty ones that you don't want in your classroom. And so I get that like kind of spring crappiness. Um, and that like, all I want to do is get them outside so they can run and run and run. Um, which is why I love the bike thing, like, I was like, oh man, I'll bring my work kids over there. But, um, you know, but again, if we're really looking at what is in the best interest of the school calendar, because it's for students, we're looking at their academic needs. I think there could be a ton more conversations about what we can do to support teachers and their need as employees and adults who are taking care of our kids. Um, probably half of you don't want to hear me talk anymore, so you don't want to know that. But I have lots of thoughts on that. But I think they're two very separate things. Like, we're looking at the academic calendar for what we need to do for the academics of our children. And that's kind of separate from how do we support teachers. And I don't want that to seem like I don't support you because I 100% do. Um, but I think they're two separate conversations in my opinion.
Someone just can't, they're talking to them because we as a board talk a lot about mental health.
For our students and our teachers.
Um, there were schools in Minnesota that switched to a four-day school week. And so that is kind of like our conversations as a board have gone from all of the options. Like, we have talked about that. Um, from the four-day school week to starting earlier, to taking more Fridays off, try to help the attendance issues that is the goal of the high school, how to get people there, so. It, it is just a big discussion, I really don't want to get into.
But if you want to talk academic teams, the one calendar that is shown superior to everything else is the four-day team.
Yeah.
I think that's the long-term, academically shows significant.
That's all-day school or all-year school.
Yeah, and we like, like, and I, I work in the lacrosse school district a little bit, we've seen that, you know, with the elementary school and not at the high school level. And there, there are definitely some pros to that in my opinion. And again, when I flip back to that like work side of that supervision need, making sure kids are getting nutrition on a daily basis, all of that. But also then, you know, if the, I, I don't know, and I'm only speaking for myself, I don't know that we're at the point to even consider getting this community to look at in all of school.
Yeah, let's not talk about the.
They are ending it, right? Because there are a lot of struggles with it too. Um, but yeah, so I just, like, these are only my opinions, like, you know, just expecting them. And I thank you for giving us the community opportunity to be able to come and talk with you.
Thank you.
Um, Danielle, by the way, there are four school board seats up for election members and you have to file by July. I can get you the information if you're interested. Um, yeah.
We spend a lot of time talking about high school sports, but I also want to bring up when we're talking about summer sports, we're also talking about summer rec. And a big one is LYB, which is where my kids fall, younger kids. LYB goes to the end of July. And, um, it might not sound like a lot, but when you're talking about carting kids around, most of those parents have to. Like, I have to because my kid can't, I'm hoping this year he can, but he's going into seventh grade and he was unsteady, carrying his baseball bag, helmet, it's all the things that he has to do. So I had to drive him. Luckily, I'm also a district employee and can do that, no problem. But that would allow my family and the families after me, because once my son gets older and is in the high school, things will change. But the families after me who do participate in LYB will experience the same thing where then you only are looking at a year and a half, or a week and a half of.
where then you only are looking at a year and a half, or a week and a half of vacation opportunity. If you're committed to not vacationing during practice and, and that type of stuff, which now as he's getting older, he's more committed to. So I also want that to be taken into account when thinking of this calendar, because that was something that personally, and also, like Danielle, thinking about the spring break, um, and talking to people about thinking of childcare starting earlier, um, instead of not around the area of schools like La Crosse. Because if school in La Crosse started before, or I mean, after Labor Day, like what we are right now, then there will be families who are also searching for childcare for about two weeks while their kids have to be home because their parents have to go to work, because we're starting already in August or early. So, that's something that has been brought to my attention too, the, the childcare piece. The other thing that I wanted to just address as far as, like, with having younger kids and then also having, starting, talking to my younger kids, they were concerned that, well, it's not very warm in, in the end of May, I won't be going to the pool then because the pool won't be open. So that they won't want to, they don't want to be out of school earlier in May. They would prefer to have more time in August when the weather is warmer and they can spend time at the pool that way on a regular schedule. So that was just something that I also wanted to add, and they are younger kids, but the pool was more of a, that, I think in letter B or whatever in the ABCs that was brought up, the pool calendar, um, means something. Really what we would just be doing is shifting to the end of August, beginning of May. My kids wouldn't have anywhere to go because then also LYB doesn't start until usually mid-June. So then they would have almost a full month of doing noth- nothing at that point, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. I just wanted to echo, I appreciate the ability to meet like this. I think there, there's some inadvertent misses on the communication that just sitting here and listening that make a lot of sense and appreciate the forum to ask questions because obviously, no ill intent, but, um, the communication was, you know, it, it left a little bit for open interpretation, and I think the discussion's positive period. Thank you.
My name's Bob Spencer, a parent and spouse of a staff member. Um, to be transparent, I never got the original survey. Um, I, the only notice I got of this was that there was community hearings and what my wife was saying was going on this year. So I didn't have a lot of information coming here today. My goal was to get information, and this conversation has been great. Um, where I'm seeing priorities, started out thinking, um, what is more valuable, time in August or time in June? And that I saw as the root of this calendar question. I understand the December days of the week and how it falls, and that's kind of why it's rushing it. But I, if it wasn't for that, it would be a year or two down the road change that I did look for. So, it would have been ideal to look at, we have December twenty-fifth coming up in May, let's talk about this two years ago. Um, but where I really want to make the comment, based on what everything I've seen, is where are we putting the priorities? Here. Number one, we're here for the kids. And in terms of priorities, we technically have to say state law is number one, make sure we're following that. What kids need is number two, and very close to that is what the staff need. As a parent, I can tell you, I should be last on the list of priorities that boys here, the students' needs and the staff's needs to need comfort.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to add one more staff, um, perspective that isn't being said out loud, and you guys have it in your concerns, is our paras are getting greatly affected by this. Um, they would be ineligible for their unemployment, which is about eight hundred to a thousand dollars, um, per para. And we're already very, very in need of paras. Um, so getting their voices heard is really important. So if you feel the need, I'm not a para, this is only coming from what was gathered in that. It's, it's in there, you guys can read all the concerns there. But it would be looking like you would be hiring a lot of parents if this went through this quickly this year.
Jay, can you explain to me a little bit more how-
So they would not be unemployed long enough by the end of this year to the start of August to be eligible for their unemployment?
Thank you.
Can I have a-
Nice to speak to you. Thank you, Mindy.
I need to do a little more research on that, but I don't necessarily know that that's accurate. Because the time employed for next year, the fiscal year the school district starts on July one, as long as they put in the same number of days from July one to June thirty next year as they do this year, they should still be eligible for unemployment, from what I can tell right now. I have a call into the state to verify that. But if, I, I saw that on the survey, I saw that in some of the questions. I also saw the question of, well, will we be giving paid less for those people who are paid not over twenty-four equal pays? And no, if you're working the same number of hours and same number of days, the same salary will go out because you're paid hourly, which is what you would be paid if you were not doing a twenty-four equal pay. It would just shift back. So instead of starting that first paycheck in September, you may start it on August.
Thank you for bringing that up.
It's just a movement of things. So I don't want that to go out, you know, and no disrespect, Jenny, but, um, I don't want that to go out to everyone as gospel because I have not been able to verify that yet.
Thank you.
And I will be perfectly honest, because of my hip surgery, I have not spent a ton of time, but I did send the email out and looking at the dates. It's a fiscal year thing, so. And so as long as they put in the hours during the fiscal year, they shouldn't go out.
I've got a question on the flex time, so, it's, so we're losing two and a half hours a week.
We're losing two hours a week.
Or two, two hours a week.
Because that's required.
So is the, I don't remember us instituting this, I don't know how long we've had this, but is it a big enough carrot? I mean, is it worth doing that? I mean, it seems like a pretty simple fix to me, starting next year, that we get rid of this. We can gain two hours a week, and how many weeks are there in a school year, thirty?
Thirty-six.
I mean, that's, there's, uh- I don't, I don't know if that's much of a carrot for people. And if it, if it prevents us having this, I mean, why are we-
With a lot of U of High school kids, you go home and ask them.
Yeah, well, Isabel, I don't, she went to school, she qualified for it, but she just went normal.
Just my two cents.
Yeah, no.
Not to interrupt you, as a mom, I will say, we've had this strong drive for attendance. I do concern that taking away that one-time removes that incentivizing attendance. And so I guess it could be maybe a fifty-fifty, but I'd be curious what that would look like for attendance. Or if that could potentially throw wrench in the incentivizing of kids being at school and doing what they're supposed to be doing to get that hour off in the morning.
Do you see sidecars as being a huge incentive?
I'd say, can we talk about, can we talk about this at a board, a separate board meeting? I just want to make sure we get through the calendar questions and answers, and then we have a full board meeting to still get through. Um, so, other questions, comments? You came, you're here, we normally don't get people here, so if you have questions, let's hear them. Like, you got dressed, right? It's a big day for me, I put, like, real pants on and- Yeah, Josh?
I, I'm just here because I saw some comments about the pool, but- I'm, but, uh, the, the pool will follow whatever schedule, you know, happens. So, I just, I'm not, somehow, we're not steering the calendar, we're, pool will follow what's going on.
All your workers will either be in school or not.
I don't like the pool open, I don't know, but, but I, I basically open it depending on school calendar and staff bill bills. And I don't go that, right now, audience.
Sounds like meetings adjourned now.
Uh, just to feed that future conversation, if eliminating flex time is a possibility and it will help shorten this problem, not necessarily solve it, but shorten it, I think that might need to be priority number one for every day that I've heard.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, and we have Wednesdays too, so we'll, we'll add that as a future. And everyone is welcome to come to any board meeting, second Wednesday, third Wednesday of the month at six o'clock.
And they are recorded online.
They are recorded, if you miss it, yep. Can always catch us later.
Yeah. Can I have one question? If you apply for this, say, by the May, or April deadline, but you say, you know what, we decided we want to delay this for the fall off, is that a possibility, or if you apply for it and it's like, we're doing this, we're in?
Um, no, it is a possibility. It is a possibility. We just have been given permission by MDE at that point, and if the district still remains autonomous in making that decision as to whether we use it or not.
I was wondering if clarification could be provided to staff on the one hundred sixty-five days versus hours versus how many days we go versus how many days we're adding? Like, could, could that clarification be well provided to us? I know there's probably some figuring to be done on this. Um, but Andy, are you hearing this one?
It broke up, so I didn't hear all of it.
Um, Mindy, I was wondering if clar- if there's, was some clarification that could be provided, um, kind of culminating some of the questions that happened tonight, um, like, one hundred sixty-five days versus the hours versus the amount of days that we go versus how many days we'd actually be adding, or would we not actually be adding days if we did this? Could we, the first step of it, um, could clarification be provided to staff for that?
It definitely can, I mean, we can definitely provide it, I just need to know exactly what the questions are that you have and the questions you need answered. Because otherwise, we'd spend a whole heck of a lot of time writing up this stuff and not make the mark.
I think what you-
And so if you're willing and can send something off to Brittany and I, um, I'd be willing to make a look at. I mean, I'm on for, I'm medical leave for a while, but I do a little bit of work at home.
Um, it might be worth noting that, um, the calendar also has tied not only to the minimum number of state statute but to the master agreements with staff. So there's the specific number of days for staff in-
Oh, certified and non-certified staff.
It shouldn't be a mystery.
Exactly, thanks for bringing up that.
It is what it is, it's gotta, you gotta have so many days.
I would, I would think a calendar sometimes would have-
And then there's hours, and then there's-
There's not, well, the calendar is really-
Hold on, I'm gonna- There used to be a calendar, I mean, this is the first year doing it this way.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, I'm, I'm understanding you're wanting to know what are the state requirements for days, state requirements for hours in your contract expiration, and kind of compare those three different numbers along with that, right?
It's like on the calendar, whether it was to how many hours we have a month per-
Okay.
Yeah, because that's how I would-
Yeah, it's, that's, it's on, she's got the little numbers in there.
Does it say hours though? I don't see it as days.
Oh, maybe it's days, yeah.
And then at the end, it, it just says one seventy-three.
Good point, yeah.
So maybe hours per month, it might be nice to just see how that lays out.
And I think hours is newer to a lot of us people.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I might be totally wrong, but I think it's been here a long time, I remember. I do feel like in years, like, many years ago, when they had the Wednesday thing, I know that there's a master agreement with the one seventy-four, and maybe that, it was like they planned it that way, but I do feel like to prevent you going from June ninth, or, I don't know, maybe it was a band year or something where we had to do a spring break, that they did adjust it from, we had, say, one hundred sixty-five that days and over a billion hours through the state. And then they said, you know, if your contract says one seventy-four, but this year we're doing one seventy-one because we're not going to push kids to June ninth. And then maybe they negotiated that all ahead of time, but I do feel like there had been a year where we haven't done the one seventy-four, but we always have done more than the hot, like, the state, the state statute, and that's it. We've always done, we've always done, like, yeah, nine days, more, like, here. In contract, contract.
One other question was, uh, the spring break concept. We noticed in, I can't remember which calendar it was, what year, but just thinking about, there was a spring break in the week, and then we had a week back, and then the next week is Easter, and so then we had a Friday and a Monday off. So as we looked at that, we're like, okay, great, so we're gone for five days, we're back for four, whatever it might be. So, wondering about that Easter time, or maybe you can't call that anywhere, I don't know, but that Friday, Monday, like, if we as a district are using those as days for families or whatever, can't, can't that Cordeau sort of double dip as a spring break per se? Um, because we do know families are going to go and they're going to go, but at least there is a break in there in the spring. And I would just, I would encourage us to look at that, because there's already days that are off. We build around those and not take an additional five days or separately. So, I would just encourage that for any calendar.
Carol, Brittany just said that staff contracts actually have, some of you have the, that Good Friday off, and some of you have that one day off, and so staff contracts are, you have to actually-
So they're not you, no?
I'm saying, I'm telling you what Brittany said.
I don't understand.
Support staff versus certified staff.
Right.
Support staff versus teachers.
It's support staff.
And the unemployed.
What I hear Sarah saying is it's like they're doing a separate spring break, can we build around it?
That's what I'm saying.
Not to not have-
Fun spring break, build it around the natural-
We'll keep the Friday, Monday, but work the other part of it.
Or maybe you have Thursday, Friday, Monday, if that's our spring break, we have it lots of years ago. Versus, I'll tell you the one calendar that I don't know, like, doing a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and a Monday, Tuesday, the next week. That's like shooting ourselves for two weeks, or people go on, so that's a four break. Monday, Friday would be better, but I think around Easter, I think you should look at that, and see if there are those days.
I mean, the, the one benefit I can think of of doing the spring break that way is, like, they're cheaper in the middle of the week. That's the only thing.
The, I know from parent perspective, since this came up, I think, when I was on calendar committee, like, last year on, I'm not on it, or I'm not on District Vice Director anymore, but, um, some parents expressed the concern that if they're going to run to BRVO, it's like Saturday to Saturday. So when you do like a Thursday to Tuesday, that's not helping them, they struggle with that. Or if we do a Monday off, they said they prefer Friday off, that kind of a thing. Because, I mean, you have a-
No, no, I mean, we have talked about that too, I think.
Well, I'm the parent that don't take spring break whenever it's cheap and works for me, so I'm-
So this is where I would throw, I mean, negotiations, but when you talk about spring break and like, one, like, my mom worked in a district where she's been in this district for a long time, and they had their, like, six days each year. They could take up to, like, they had twelve each, each year. They could take six of their six days as PTO. So then you, they, those families can take, staff can do their spring breaks and they can do their spring break. You don't have people say, oh, that's so good, and I'm, you know, and, you know, El Bahamut.
I mean, both could be true, right? Both could be true. Nikki, do you-
Not in our district.
I just, yeah, my question is, when's the next staff development, if that is the new calendar committee?
Well, I think they were saying that, that was the old calendar.
Oh, that's the new calendar.
District was staff development, first Monday of the month.
First Monday of the month.
But I don't feel like, I feel like our calendar committee in previous years has gotten, worked with all of the people, even like, um, not a story, and make it, all the people would come in, talk about what's important, bring it back to people within the building and get input, and then it would avoid some of the conversations that are happening in headspace.
A separate calendar.
And I'm not, I don't know that it should be separate from DWSD, I'm not saying that. I just feel like nobody got, nobody, that's a small team, and they didn't get very many voices of other people for their input this year.
And since they were not previously the cali- previously the calendar committee, they may not have known that that's, oh, the calendar committee.
They didn't, so, yes. I don't wanna write this out, but the calendar committee and the staff development committee are almost identical, there is a couple different phases, I served on both for many years. And it was a nightmare of bouncing back and forth, calendar committee would meet, and then we'd have to wait till staff development, then we'd talk to staff development, then we'd talk to oversight. And as far as my recollection, we haven't called in other districts or others surrounding like charter private schools in a couple years that we, we stopped. Try to set our stuff. We didn't stop caring.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Sorry, I'm a little spicy today, I'm gonna. Your drawing is beautiful.
Okay, um, are there additional questions or comments?
Well, did, did I miss here that the ultimate goal in an ideal world would have four years planned? Three, and a minimum, four?
She, she'd like to just have it out there while.
I think three is really what we.
For the application.
Sure.
And that, like, maybe the intention has always been to get out two to three years.
Sure, and it sounds like there may have been a perception that this was an immediate urgent implement next year, but that may not be the case.
That is not the case.
Okay, and that there's an opportunity for a, a calendar committee to assess as well? And I would, I would think you could accomplish a lot if you're building out a four-year calendar where there, you know, there inevitably overlap where you could get off topic pretty easily, but if you're locking in a four-year calendar, everybody needs to agree to that, seems like a reasonable responsibility and expectation for that assigned group.
I think if we had calendars, three or four years, all the parents are saying, we're just education whenever we want. When you have the calendar, you might.
No, still go when it's cheapest, Jacob. Okay, any others? Last call for questions, comments. Hey, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the board meeting, but you are.
Hey, Jacob. Jacob, so the, the, the. Is that you're losing an hour a week? The P L C time?
For the early release. It's not an hour, it's thirty, what is it, thirty-two minutes.
Two and a half hours a week, though.
Does anyone wanna take a five-minute break? Let's take a five-minute break and come back. Jenny, thank you.
I can see this, but two hours a week, we have it all together. Between the two.
Clearly.
Well, yeah, like, bottle it in, Jack, bottle it inside. Don't share it.
Don't, please don't bottle it in.
No, I, uh, people get really amped up, and I, I'm just here to talk about my travel opportunity, and so, uh. Oh, that was before I.
Well, it just. But, yes, I, I.
Said the one had.
Yeah.
I lost it the other day, that's when I saw the rapture sign. Did the rapture sign get figured out?
I see we're all bad, should we, uh? Wizard? Boy, six foot four bald guy.
Well, we're not voting on anything yet. Okay, let's get restarted. Uh, if you're keeping score, we're on number eleven or ten on the printed, board member report. Morgan?
Nothing to report.
Miller? Cody?
I have my updates, I went to, um, the, the meetings this month that I was assigned to go to, so for the staff development. Um, they approved their staff development plan pending some changes, it was a really great talk, a really great meeting to be at. They clarified some expectations for non-certified staff, they created a really great spreadsheet for keeping track of all of their extra hours and their categories and that they fit them into for ease, so that was really nice. Um, the oversight committee discussed their, um, B L T compensation, they're building leadership team compensation and getting equal representatives there from every, uh, aspect of staffing. Um, they're finding funding to get all areas represented that weren't yet, they spent a lot of time explaining all of their process to me, so that was really awesome, I just wanted to thank all of them. Tell them here, but thank you, because I asked a lot of questions. Um, there was some frontline updates in using better formats and better services and correct routing to forms and dropdowns, et cetera. And creating goals for next year for Q C O P, and then Kathy will be completing her oversight duties. So honestly, we saw her retirement as well, so thank Kathy for all of that. Um, and she got all the forms submitted to the states on time and, um, for Q C O P and oversight, which is what gives us our funding, so that is very, very important. I think that was it for those meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Nothing to report.
Marpelle?
Um, I have nothing to report, but I do have a question for my fellow board members. Uh, would you be open to having a special board meeting on two twenty-eight to get a calendar approved? That is the day after the last public hearing?
For approval of the calendar?
To get all calendar approval for at least the next school year, otherwise the March board meeting isn't for another three weeks? And people are just wanna know what the calendar is for next year?
Yes, I'm open.
So two twenty-eight is a Wednesday.
But didn't, but didn't people just complain about, this seems like a rushed job and, you know, yada, yada, yada? They want transparency, and some like, they wanted us to think on this more than we made, to make a decision? Or am I not understanding what you're saying?
So the last public hearing is on two twenty-eight?
Yep, and we were supposed to make the decision at the March fourth.
Right, which is three more weeks out, and people are wait, want to know, like, when is graduation next year so they can book?
I understand, okay.
I respect the ask. I respect the ask if we're only approving for a calendar year next year, and then March we go, will you look further into whether or not we're going with a three-year application?
My thought is we could just put an agenda or an action item for calendar approval and then have the discussion.
Can we call it a vote?
Yeah, we have to vote.
No, I know, can we call it calendar vote?
Well, it'd be under the action items, so that would require.
That is a vote, yeah, I just worry calling it calendar approval would.
I see what you're saying, yeah. Yep, I get it. Good, good suggestion. So are you, yes, you would be open to?
I, I'm not, but.
Okay.
So I think we have to, I mean, we've, I've been getting emails, I don't know if anybody else.
Yes, I have been getting emails, Brittany's been getting emails.
There's weddings, graduations.
Yeah.
Then I would ask, can we make sure that it's just that and not?
Yeah.
Five other things?
Yeah, so a special board meeting to get a calendar, a calendar approved for next year.
Motion to get a calendar approval, action item meeting for two twenty-eight.
Yeah, and is there a time that works better, like, you want it earlier than six, five thirty?
Can we do it by Zoom?
It has to be after.
We could do five thirty to six.
Is it, when is the, is it the hearing that thing?
Nope, the hearing is the day before.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The last hearing's here during kindergarten.
So that's next week.
On the twenty-seventh, so that's Tuesday, and then that would give a chance to get all the input put together. And then we could have the special meeting the twenty-eighth, five thirty to six, just that topic.
Do we have a draft brought in prior so admin can see it before we?
We'd have to have a calendar to approve.
So, April?
Yes.
Um, quick question, how can we report back to the group or to the community? I'm thinking teachers that were here and the community members, when they had talked about the next staff development meeting being the calendar committee, meeting on the first of March? And wanting that to be available on the calendar and having.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I missed that part. So we want to have them meet first.
They can think the first month of the month, and we can do it that following Wednesday.
I would just be concerned that I've been communicating to everyone that it's going to the March regular board meeting, and that it might make people panic whenever they say, okay, well, they've been saying this.
Yep.
Now I'm losing trust again, they're not being transparent, they just told us at that meeting.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so that, that would, I, I understand the direction you're wanting to go, I just would worry about that part.
That's a good point. I think you talked me off the ledge.
It was a good thought.
So everyone.
We actually do the best we can.
So just never mind my board report, on to the next item.
So moved.
Jeff, did you have a board member report at all? Okay. Well, I'm glad we worked through that, thank you. Um, okay, could we get the Cliff's Notes version of the administrative reports, starting with high school?
Sure, uh, registration is done, it'll take a while to go over the numbers, uh, attendance data, you can see the data there. Uh, this is for first semester this year compared to last semester, uh, all kinds of numbers and data for you, they're short version, it's really good. And then up with us, as we talked at finance, uh, we had several F T Es who were here now, uh, you can see four hundred and forty-four student days. So that ends up being almost fifty thousand dollars more that comes into the district just due to the increased attendance for first semester and high school. So, uh, next thing, P S E O, we're talking about that again, that also ties into funding, we can see the results of the survey there. Uh, we're moving into hiring, so just highlighting a few things that are going on to help recruit, uh, potential new teachers to our district, there's a lot of time goes in there. And final item, spotlighting our wonderful art department, because they do all kinds of beautiful things. Uh, if you've been in the building, uh, coming in for a sporting event, whatever else, you can see the lantern nation that's painted on the main windows, you see the, you know, art windows, uh, you see other windows that are painted. That's all thanks to our high school art department and their students, so, Miss Greenard, Miss Vanderburg doing fantastic work, and then obviously all the stuff here with Ellie as well, so. Art makes our building beautiful, so, good news.
Thank you. I did have, sorry, I did have a question on the P S E O versus online.
Yes.
When I read your paragraph, it, both sounded like it was a negative thing, and I always was under the assumption that students that are able to take P S E O as a positive thing because they're taking college, you know, it's like they're.
It's a double edged sword. Um, every student who does it, we lose funding, we also lose that student being within our building. Which studies have shown that it has a negative impact on their mental health, a negative impact on their sense of belonging, and then also a little bit of negative impact on our buildings, you're taking those top two students out. And that impacts school environment, so those parts are negative, is it a positive for the student if they get college credit? Yes, that is. I would say it's came drastically in that most P S E O classes are now entirely online, so they're not even getting a college experience.
Is it free for them to take those?
We pay them, it's free to the student, yes.
We have an in the school building doing it? Can we have an in the school building doing it?
Well, that's what A P courses are and, um, college classrooms, we have some of those options.
But they can't be in P S E O in our building, right?
They can sit in our building, but we don't get the money for it.
Right.
Are they all doing the same course work?
I would say the, depends on where you're getting it, sometimes the P S E O course for kids is easier than what they would take at our school.
Those kids aren't getting thrown out.
Like, what do you mean the neck of the road?
Kids that are in school, post-secondary, they come here, I think they're.
They can sit in the study hall and do their stuff if they want to.
Yeah, so they're not, they're welcome to stuff.
I mean, they just gotta be in a room, we don't want them right in the hallway, yeah.
But our teachers don't help if they have questions, and then online too, they don't help, our teachers don't help.
It's not our student.
Right. Uh, it happens, in my own case. I don't, I feel like I'm gonna sign Easton up for P S E O classes to get free college credits, like, next year, can you do it in eighth grade?
Fifth grade, right, is the, as soon as you can go?
Depends on the institution, that's up to, all P S E O is governed by the whole secondary. So some will accept tenth graders for some classes, not all, almost all except juniors. All, all of P S E O is governed by the whole secondary.
And there's a limit in guidelines to those, just for the record.
And that's up to the whole secondary.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I can definitely go shorter than that. Uh, only thing I'm gonna add, other than what's in my report, is that, um, we just, uh, got news today, uh, fifth grade teachers applied for a, a Macmillan field trip grant, uh, we're going to. They're planning on going to the Minnesota Museum of History and the Minnesota Zoo in the spring anyway. Um, but, uh, got notice today that they were, um, accepted and it's a, it's fourteen hundred dollars that can be put towards transportation. And so, that, that's certainly a, a nice add-on, they just took it on themselves to, to apply for that and, uh, they got that, um, notice today, so, um, pretty exciting. And just so you can read through my report, there's some, some good stuff going on, some important conversations took place, we had some, uh, you know, kids not making great, great choices, and so we, uh, we addressed that and have some things in place, uh, to hopefully, uh, make that better moving forward, uh, but, uh, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, on to elementary.
Third and probably most riveting calendar committee will be at kindergarten registration, which is on Tuesday the twenty-seventh. Um, it'll be a traditional open house, we'll all be leading tours. We are outpacing our, yeah, there's lots of fun, we have here, we're outpacing our, getting to the brass tacks for you. We're outpacing our kindergarten registration by over double last year's numbers. So, we're hopeful that trend will continue, because that's a very important part of our staffing plan and lots of things hinge on that. Not the least of which is average dating memberships and all the things that go with that, so.
Do you have any, um, ideas as to why it's so much?
Couple, couple ideas, apparently you can do it on this now.
Yes.
And you, we, our PTO has also pointed, ponied up a hundred dollar gift certificate, a hundred dollar gift card to make a media buzz on social media, so. Some innovative incentives to registering early. So, thank you to the PTO for that, in addition to all the other things that the PTO does for us, um.
Plus the large crowd that four K has this year.
Yeah, we got a bumper crowd, we added, added a section of.
Thank you, COVID.
The COVID, the COVID, boom.
They, they gotta, they gotta go somewhere, I mean, we added a section of preschool, so they're coming.
Well, seventy-one was a cold winter.
Anyway, the rest is posted for your review, I, I forgot what I wrote, so let's keep going.
Okay, sounds good, me. Uh, Beth?
Good job, Jeff.
Um, quickly, kids company summer registration is open February fifteenth to March fifteenth. Um, discovery preschool for twenty-four, twenty-five is open for current families and staff. And then the general public for discovery preschool opens on March fourteenth. And special shout-out to Mr. Eckert, um, he is officially retiring from teaching summer community ed classes. He has taught eleven summers for us, so desperately seeking somebody to replace him for his fishing, um, camp, his archery camp. And explore the dripless camp and let's get moving for the little students. He's done an awesome job for us, but he's ready to move on and do something else with his summer, so. He will be missed and we appreciate all that he's done for us.
How would an individual get in touch with you if they're interested in that?
Email me, call me, show up at the district office, yeah.
Just light a flare and she'll show up.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, get in touch with me, I'd love to find a replacement.
Okay, um, thank you. Any additional questions or comments for Beth? Alrighty, Pat, you're up next.
Snap, we have full, we have.
I saw that, that's very exciting, congratulations.
Finally, it's full snap. Um, Kathy Diner's picture there, she started about two, two months ago. And then, Chris Hardgribslid and Asher Anthemos. And I'm not gonna use other stuff there either.
Awesome.
Awesome, this is good to hear.
It is.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Alright, Mindy's?
Uh, super candidate report as submitted, if you have any questions, go for it. Thank you. I just think it'd like to be able.
Thanks, and she wants. I saw the highlight of that report was that, um, Mr. Malacola gets to move to Colorado, that'd be sweet.
He'll be missed, Josh.
Congratulations on your new gig.
Sounds pretty cool.
It is.
Josh has started a new adventure.
Or Colorado, uh, Windsor's just, uh, just east of Fort Collins.
I'm excited for you guys, yeah.
Um, okay, moving along, we're at Education Minnesota.
So, I looked at this at the beginning, I don't know if anything's been added to it, I was trying to skim through it. Um, lots of, uh, fun stuff in the middle school, if you happen to down the hallway, um, the, uh, composite figures make me smile every time I walk down there, working on, um, shapes, um, some geometry stuff, so. And then, um, middle, uh, facts, um, uh, Heather has some really great stuff in here, I got to judge, help judge the, um, cupcake wars, which is the, um, next slide, um, that was delicious and fun. Um, some really amazing efforts, I, I actually voted for Lily's group, that they were delicious and they were food free. Um, so, um, that was, it was, you were there too, it was fun, so really, they were excited about it, great displays. Yes, that would be, that was pretty good, so.
You can have a board session, you go and vote.
Yes. Um, and, um, who doesn't love a little kindergarten music? Oh, my God, they're so adorable. Let me keep that song. And then, uh, teacher recognition, um, Mark Moulton was honored as the tech educator of the year for the Upper Mississippi Manufacturing Alliance.
That's amazing.
Oh, didn't he? Yeah, I didn't know anything on it. Um, and, um, on the hundredth day of school, I'm not sure how we marked it in our building, but this looks a lot more fun.
Valentine's Day teacher conferences, hundred day, and the book fair.
All of them.
We go all in here.
I, I love that, um.
Same thing, same.
The art teacher really loves the modeling of atomic structure here from sixth grade science. Uh, fifth grade worm composting. When they're still excited to handle worms. Um, uh, we have ten, eleven students, excuse me, with artwork on display, it's part of the Southeast Minnesota Art Show. Um, this was started by Kevin Cardell when he was here and has continued on. Um, and I just threw this, this is part of the letter I sent to parents, so this is just happy to paste, I'm gonna give you some of the details on it. And Brittany, I think you put something on the website, didn't you? I didn't double check, because I don't feel like any to an answer, so. Um, and then just a couple more things that the kids are doing in our classes. Um, ugly mugs, um, which we do annually, and many teachers ask for, they're the only project where it's okay to tell, to tell the kids it's ugly, but that's kind of the goal for. And then, um, I just, yeah, you should. And the snowflake window, which will be coming down because Mother Nature is making it spring way too soon, so I do need to hear the snowflakes at this point, too.
They're pretty.
I, yeah, it's, yeah, and then these are from my, um, mixed media class, they made their own, um, mosaics, they painted all the papers.
Very cool.
And just some drawing class stuff.
I missed the dates on the Rochester Art Center.
I can send you guys, I'll just, even if I just send you the parent email or I'll copy that part, I'll send it to you guys.
Thank you.
And then Ally adds some, um.
It's linked in the agenda, thank you.
Some super fun, um, elementary art stuff, I, I smiled just coming in here and seeing all her displays. It's just so colorful, so joyous.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Do you have art, do you have any art? Just so you know, I'm willing to pick up art if there's ever art, like, left over that people don't pick home or do you?
Well, now that you ask. I normally give away all the ceramics that gets left, and I have carts for it, I'm going to have some of my students, um, re, like redecorate a few things that are not aesthetically pleasing and some things that weren't laced, and I'm going to do a little art sale.
That's a great idea.
That in some way I could take that money and funnel it back into another pottery wheel or the equipment to actually use the spray booth that was purchased five years ago. That I don't have a compressor or a spray gun for. Because the booth was purchased, but not any of the supporting materials.
Oh, my.
How, how much?
I have no idea, I'll look.
Yeah.
Last.
Yeah, but I thought it would be a good way to, um, not get rid of the ceramics, but kind of get rid of it, but bring some money back into the program.
That's a great idea, I, the local nursing homes are open to artwork that can be hung on walls as well.
Oh, okay, yes, I always have lots of that gets, that gets left to where, yes, so.
That's a great idea. They love that stuff.
They do, yeah. But yeah, certainly when I get the art sale, I'll make sure to send it out to all email users.
That's it.
Okay, um, moving along, we are on review and informational items, uh, budget and balance sheet, anything to note on those?
Nothing to note, other than the reports that are in there, we did have a finance page, I mean. Finance com, ugh, trying to talk fast, sorry. Finance committee meeting today before the board meeting, and I had four topics and we got through one. So, it was great, I loved to talk numbers, I had so much fun, I don't know if anybody else did.
No.
But, um, yeah, so, we'll just, we'll, we're gonna have it every quarter and hopefully we just keep talking numbers, so, yeah, otherwise, nothing else.
Anyone on the board? Anything on those? Keep going, enrollment?
Thank you. Just trying to just step right out here.
And thanks to Brittany for splitting out the online versus PSEO. For the reports, she went backwards and we'll do that going forward.
Jumped up for it. And that was the change in Smizer.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's the spite that I've been talking about for the last few months.
It always happens.
Wasn't as noticeable last year. We had a much bigger increase this year.
Do we have an idea why?
That's part of the survey, there was a report, as far as what are the reasons the kids are doing this.
Okay. Moving along. Uh, policy is one that I did not do, uh, we have eight oh six crisis management.
That's a work in pros, progress, um, our next meeting for health and safety is in April. However, we do have some work sessions planned, um, in the near future, hopefully, um. Basically, um, the model policy is what we're hoping to use as a concrete pillar. Rochester and Winona are currently using, uh, emergency preparedness plan. Kind of adopted from I Love You Guys, if you're not sure what that is, you can certainly Google it. Um, the premise came from a family that adopted a bill basically and created this program after their daughter passed from a school shooting. And her last text message to her family was, I love you guys. So, but it's very neat, simple. Um, it, it's way easier and more simpler, I guess, terrible English tonight, but then the Alice training and a little less traumatic. So, we're hoping, it, it is going to be a project, it's not something we're gonna be able to get through a policy on in a week, probably. It'll take a little bit.
The policy, I understand, should be good to go, it's the procedures part that they'll be spending time on.
And we have to incorporate that in somehow, I'm not positive.
So, back to the Ellis transition.
Right, right.
So, you're, are you thinking you wanna go away from Ellis Street?
I love you guys foundation was the, was the basis for most of our conversation at the, um, the safety meeting. It's a, it's a, it's a fantastic program. And Alice has been good for a long period of time, but it's a little bit more of a narrow scope of use. And the newer program would, um, lend itself to a wider variety of horrible things.
Alice is really only for shooters.
Yeah.
And where this is all the emergencies.
Yeah, a wider variety of emergencies and sorts of it's a.
So, is it still a shelter, so are they, is it still shelter, it's not shelter in place with Alice, it's get out, right?
Yeah.
So, is it the same?
Depends on where the, the threat is, yeah, it's, it's similar from that standpoint, there, there are some similarities still, yes. I love you guys foundation, I believe it is the website to check out, it's good stuff.
I thought it was interesting and pretty cool, whenever I looked at the I Love You Guys Foundation that Dan Fitch had shared, I, like, noticed there were some recommended FEMA trainings. And I went on this whole, like, deep dive, nerded out on it, and I've done some of those FEMA trainings, and I think that's pretty cool to recommend to staff to do.
So, the, the policy should be good, you're still working on the procedure, right? Uh, student behavior report?
Hit that one more time. Brittany? Did she say that?
Yes, you're right, thank you. I get you right.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, um, moving on, uh, oh, I edited this one. Um, student behavior working session, key takeaways and next steps. Uh, so, we had the working session on student behavior. It was a long time ago, if you recall. Um, were there any key takeaways that the board wanted to note or any next steps? That we wanted to do from that session? Greg? Uh, I mean, I thought it was, I liked having that working session and having that open kind of communication to hear the feedback, kind of the two-way. Um, and what they're seeing in the classrooms and then how can we support that as a board? I think Josh had some things in his report where they did some things in follow-up to that. I think there's definitely some opportunity in the elementary school to do some things, probably, but not for the board.
I'd be interested in follow-up feedback from admin to know what's working and what's not at some point. I'm not asking for it, not like, end of year maybe, just to see what's working, what's not.
Daniel?
In the elementary school, is there any specific conversations being had in any of the, um, PDIS or anything that involves the tools in elementary school to be able to do, not just adult related, but other things that go along with that?
Like the social emotional learning?
All.
Yeah, we just actually did, in addition to doing an equity audit for PDIS, we did an audit on our SEL curriculum. And I think that was a data we, we'd shared with you that, um, I think eighty-four or eighty-nine percent of staff are using it or are doing, um, those lessons. Um, so I think next steps for that, I mean, I'm, I'm working with Amy Rohr, she's got data on what's called the SABERS or the, the social academic emotional behavior rating scale. what's called the SABERS or the, the social academic emotional behavior rating scale and looking at which kids are growing in there or which kids are we missing. And it's oftentimes the quiet kids, the ones that are not acting out or creating a scene or behavior or sent to the office or swearing. The ones that are hurting inside and we don't see it. We find that out through that social emotional behavior rating scale and then what do we have to, to help them? And we look at, you know, that, those student names and find out is there schooling mental health that we can provide for them? Are there social groups? Are there, is there other counseling options? So yeah, those are some examples of what we're doing.
And I would just like to add, I was also thrilled to see everything that Josh has done since then. We are really losing an asset. Sad to see you go. Um so that's really awesome. And then one of the key takeaways that I had from that was the, the gap to home mostly for like the elementary school and that social emotional learning and trying to get some of that information home or talk about it at conferences or have like a little booth set up at conferences and like all those ideas that can get parents more involved in understanding that. I, I know as a daycare provider, a lot of parents don't understand it and that's a lot of the stuff I'm trying to tell them about their kids going to school and what they need to work on.
I think that was one of the gaps we identified as well. Some are using the like as a part of their newsletter, the second step lessons, but I don't think all are. So that's an identified gap.
Yeah.
Um and then one related um item. Um I was contacted by um, his name is Ren Hegi and they are a family from Cassin. So Terry and I, Terry Donovan and I were both on uh youth football board with Ryan. Um and his son passed away from suicide. Um and they have set a foundation up um called Aiden's Light in his um honor. And uh I was told that they selected our school for next fall um because of Ryan's connection with Terry and I to um come and do a presentation here. And there's a movie and then there's a young lady that when she was a um high school cheerleader, she attempted um to take her own life but survived and does uh speaking. And so they bring her into, they fly her up from Texas, they bring her into um five schools that they pick. And um so I gave Ryan um contact information for Mindy, Terry, Brittany to get that set up for our school um for next fall. Um I think he said October, but I just think that would be such a great um thing for our students and our staff to hear that experience and it's, it's a pretty amazing thing that they've done out of a terrible unimaginable situation.
April, will that just be high school or is there a way, is it appropriate for some middle school instead of the may?
Yeah, I think admin will have to work that out with them based on the the content, yeah.
So they can do a separate presentation.
Yeah. So we'll have them work with Mindy and admin on what they feel is most appropriate given and I'm sure there's face limitations in the auditorium too. But that should be pretty cool.
Great job, April. Could be an interesting forum too, or like if they can have her do two sessions, do one for public. Cause as parents knowing signs and things to look for could be helpful.
They do do pub- do do, do do. They do public, they have done in the past, um public.
Maybe that's something you can do as a community, like or find a grant to cover the second session or something.
It's Aiden's Light is the um, the group and they have a Facebook page and I think a website as well.
I was gonna say if there's virtual resroundings, maybe those are things that belong for people, that might be a trigger for some families, so.
Okay, on that, moving on. Uh we are at consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Discussion.
Thank you to Josh. It's been a pleasure working with you. Sorry to see you go, but Colorado isn't gonna suck. And uh and Kathy Erickson, that's, that's wow, how many years? Thirty-six years, six. God bless her.
I heard she um retired on, she gave notice on her birthday, her birthday present. That's the goal. That's goals right there, yeah. Um any, any other, do you, can we pull up donations please? Kinda wide open for Mr. Cop there, I don't know.
Comes and volunteers here and helps kids read, so he's just trying to keep busy and we're helping him stay young.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. We are finally on to action items. We have two action items. Um the first one is related to the superintendent evaluation. Um could you bring up the second link, please? So I included the policy on the superintendent evaluation. This is the procedure that we are following for the superintendent evaluation. Um I included the board agenda from October as well as a link to the recording and at one hour and nineteen minutes into it, we approved the evaluation that you were asked to complete in January or February first. Okay, so, and Darcy worked with Mindy to document what the evidence would be. Is that correct, Darcy?
Yep.
Okay.
She created most of it.
Okay. So, I need the board's decision because half the board didn't answer the mid-year evaluation or didn't like the questions. Um, and Mindy didn't, she answered the survey but may, like, didn't want to provide too much detail in the evidence out of, out of data privacy concerns. Um, which I, you know, I certainly didn't expect any performance improvement plans to be attached as evidence. I just, you know, that wasn't what I would have expected, nor would I. That's not legal, so um. So I have some board member responses and Mindy's response. I have some that just didn't like the questions and then some that didn't respond. So, I'm following this. What would you like me to do? Do you want me to give her the, the answer, the feedback I did receive? Do you not want to give her the mid-year evaluation? Do you wanna change what the procedure is?
Can you put the questions in question up?
Sure, can you pull up the agenda link and it's linked in the October agenda?
So I missed the October meeting, so I didn't, I didn't get to vote on it?
This one? Yep. But you would have received the survey of what the top goals are for the superintendent. So we surveyed the board members, I surveyed the board members and of those who responded, these were the top three goals that came out. We sent it to Mindy to provide the evidence of performance because we're not exactly sure um how to find that attainably.
Right, yeah.
And um I did, there was the MSBA um video that went out. We had asked Brittany to send that out to everybody and so we followed that process, we approved it.
Well, it's, so it's three questions, but it doesn't feel like three questions. How are we supposed to know what the evidence is? We're not privy to, you know, employee. Actually, I, I, I feel like this is really hyper. I don't like the questions. I was one of them that didn't like the questions.
Okay, we picked the questions and approved the question. So what would you like me to do?
I feel like maybe deserves our thoughts on these questions. I mean, it's not like we make big decisions on this, it's just to show her what we see.
So you're on track or?
If you're on track, we wanna see more of this or less of that.
It doesn't have to be a negative thing. No.
That's what it feels like. That's how I'm interpreting.
As far as doing them, I feel like the timing's a little off, but I feel like we just kinda.
Well, back to the procedure. The timing was just a little bit off again this year because this is something that we've been trying to get into the swing of
Yeah.
the last two years. It is in the policy and it hasn't been done for that, so.
So we, instead of, everything's been followed, instead of number three being September, that was done in October because we had to get the evidence documented first.
Yes.
So October is when it came to us and then January is when we would do the mid-year with sharing the results February. So do we not wanna do the mid-year part and we just wanna do an annual?
Can you put the questions back up, please?
I would prefer to do annual, I feel like.
MSBA strongly suggested it just so you can let them know before the, the annual at the end of the year um that way they can make adjustments if they weren't feeling like they were meeting their goals maybe that checked in.
Maybe it's just a self-evaluate or I don't know. I just, I felt my two cents and I was very open with April about it that I felt like it seems, if I received this as an employee in a school, I would feel like I was being punitively judged or evaluated. And I feel like some of it might be too hard to answer when you're dealing with this environment as a trade. Cause I don't know how you can measure some of those things.
So again, we picked these questions, we worded it and we worked with Mindy to, to document what the evidence would be, so how do you want to change it?
We wanna maybe change the mid-year to a self-evaluate versus a authority val and then do a authority val once a year. So that she can self-evaluate and then make, and have her presented to us.
Pivot and change what needs.
Yeah.
Then she can change if she feels like this isn't working. And then we evaluate once a year.
Mindy, are you still there?
Some of these goals take.
Yes, I'm still here.
Oh, some of these goals just take more than six months, three months. I mean, these, this stuff takes years. We've, we're coming off of years of unsteady administration also. Could you put that in your, I mean, I, I don't care either way what we do, could, could you add that as part of your response? Like I feel like as of today, this is on track to be completed or you're doing well on your goal or here's a couple of things that you could do to I feel that you could do better to get to that goal. I mean, it doesn't have to be I, I don't feel like all these questions are any negative. I think it's just good to know where, where you are. So that like, Darcy, did you say if there is something maybe that is a concern that she could work on it so that her yearly evaluation?
In the procedure that MSBA um promotes, they say that it's better to do it this way and openly with your superintendent and working with them um with this mid-year one so that at the end of the year they don't feel bombarded or like they felt like they were getting progress and information from you throughout the year versus just, hey, at the end of the year, you didn't do that and we're not happy with it.
Yeah, I hate to show about my review at work and be like, you did these ten things wrong but never said anything to me prior kind of thing. I would hate that personally.
But how am I supposed to know if ensuring work issues are being handled by the appropriate levels roles? Nobody reports to me. I, am I supposed to, I mean, how, how do I, how do I answer that? I don't know, not in the building.
Do you feel like it did?
I feel like I'm not.
Okay, but again, we picked these.
You, six out of seven picked. Scroll up, six out of seven, I didn't pick this. I was gone in October.
Nope, this is this, this is from, no, this is from the survey that was, so there were like ten things that were identified in a survey that Mindy sent to staff last year.
Okay, well, let me stop you there. My guess is my answers weren't these. So you know what, I'm one of seven?
You, you are in the six of seven that replied to the survey.
Well, good, right, but but I, I, these weren't my, these aren't what I would have picked.
Okay, so what would the board like me to do with? I have one, two, three, four survey, for, four responses up for this that we could provide to Mindy, plus Mindy's. Do you want me to share that with her? And then summarize at the next board meeting, which is what the procedure calls for? Do you not want to do that and skip the mid-year? So someone make a motion on what you would like me to do and then we can vote on it.
I motion to leave it open the rest of this week for anybody else that would like to add their perspective and then on Friday close it and then provide the feedback to Mindy as is.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay. Discussion. Okay, all in favor of that?
What's the motion?
She's going to reopen.
No, I'm serious. What is the motion?
She's going to reopen the evaluation. So those who did not participate have a chance to at the end of the week. She will move forward with the evaluation process.
Okay.
And give Mindy what we have at that time.
Does anyone else have problems with the questions? Am I crazy?
I, I feel like it's more appropriate for a self-evaluation, not for the board to be
Well, that's our job to evaluate it, but, but I don't know how I can because on question one, how do I know if work issues are being handled at the appropriate building level?
Are you getting any complaints?
No.
Then it, that being, yeah, that are being handled. Are you seeing any complaints?
It's just I, I, I loathe the questions, but I apologize.
So October would have been the time to.
Which, let her remind you, Chair Carlson, I was not at that meeting.
Right, but the agenda's published the week before.
Well, that's the end of my discussion.
I would love some input as to what we should have.
I mean, communications? Communications what?
Communications is something that the community's been asking for for a long time and it was on the MSBA standards.
Okay, but, so I can talk about, I'm happy with the social media, but I'm not happy with the printed media or, I mean, what's the?
Yeah.
And I just, that, I know I'm on record here. I'm not making any accusations or observations there, but.
I would appreciate to hear new questions. Or what.
How about goal three? Can you scroll down, please? How am I supposed to know about ineffective staff performance within the school district? Other than Joe Sixpack calling me at midnight telling me about, you know, this kid didn't get to start or whatever, you know? How, how, how am I supposed to?
But that's, at the same point, that's why she takes this and does her self-evaluation.
I guess it's subjective to the person and I guess if you're not hearing anything or nothing's come to your attention, I would just say that in the, in your response, like I, I haven't had any issues with um staff performance, maybe some conversations with Mindy. And then that's, you know, if, if you're worried about it, something being negative, then that would offset the, you know, negative tone maybe. But is that what, I mean, is that what you're feeling, is it's negative?
Well, it's.
I feel like it's punitive, that information that we would not fairly be able to evaluate.
Yeah, how am I supposed to answer, other than? But anyways, okay, I'm done with my part of the discussion. Please continue. Anyone else? But anyways, okay, I'm done with my part of the discussion. Please continue. Anyone else?
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so those in favor of the motion, which was to all reopen the survey until Friday. Then on Friday, I'll close it again and then I'll compile what I have in Google Forms and provide that to Mindy. And then at the March board meeting, I will provide the high-level summary, which follows the procedure. And then going forward, we just need to make sure that we are all in agreement on the questions and what the goals are. And this, this isn't fun for.
Anyone? Yeah, I agree.
I know.
Um. And, and Mindy deserved, she deserves to have a review. Like she, we all deserve to have reviews. She deserves to have a review. And the fact that we can't agree on how to give her her review is, like, we can't have that going forward. So if anyone wants to make adjustments to the procedure or how we're doing this, I'm sure Darcy and I would be more than willing to hear feedback or suggestions on what you would like to see done differently.
And just so you know what the procedure was, that we took the input from the staff, we surveyed the board, we went to Mindy with those, asked her if she was all right with them. She helped us create them. She created the evidence of performance. The board then voted to approve them. And now we are following the rest of the procedure.
Yep.
Maybe it's more appropriate for an annual and not a every three months.
So I have a plan for what to do with this survey results I have. If people have recommendations for how to um change it going forward, please reach out to me and Darcy. And then we can bring that back to the board. Sound good? We need to forward. We had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion. Those in favor, please say aye. I thought we did that. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Oh my goodness, Ms. McGuire, I am so sorry. Uh, you were here to talk about an international travel program. I would like to sign up to go at this point, wherever it is. Put me down.
On spring break, though.
Put me down.
Uh, yeah, so my name is Brittany McGuire. I, I know most of you, but um I know it's been a long time, so I'll try to keep this to like thirty minutes or so. I'm kidding. Thirty seconds, thirty seconds, that's all I need. So I, I would like to take kids um on an international tour. Um, we have had student tours in the past that have been very successful. I led three personally. Um, two to New York City, one to Washington DC. And um I attempted to do an international tour um to Italy in the summer of twenty twenty, so you can imagine how well that went. Um, we did that, though. Um, but we all got our money back, so that was great. Um, but yeah, so this is the trip that I'm proposing. There's a huge document here. We don't need to re-thrall. But basically the gist of it is that we would like to go to England and Scotland for nine days, summer of twenty twenty-five to next summer. Um, on page, I forget, my phone doesn't tell me what page it is. Uh, but there is a, a pricing list on there. Yeah, it's definitely towards the bottom. It is spendy, but I will say, um, the, yeah, right there. Um, so for students, it's about forty-five hundred dollars. Um, this includes uh round-trip airfare, all hotel, um, all ticket tours, um, most of the, the things that we do while we're there and most of the food. I say most because a lot of times kids will get to do lunch on their own, they'll get to kinda go out and explore and do different things. And typically they bring their own spending money for stuff like that. Um, but yeah, it's, it's really great. EF is a great company. I've used them for all my trips. They are wonderful to work with. They can take care of any like logistical problems, things like that. When we went to um New York City two summers ago, our flight got delayed. Um, and then they canceled our flight. We got rebooked on a flight. Um, it was out of control. It was with the airline shortage, employee shortage. Um, but they got us a hotel and they took care of all of that free of charge. Um, with the international tour, the global travel protection is included in uh the price. So automatically kids are already insured, so if they um can't go or there, I mean, there are different stipulations as to how they get their money back. But they have the ability to get, um, you know, the insurance and their money back. Um, but yeah, it's a great opportunity for kids. Um, we haven't done an international tour with the school for a while. I think the last one we did was the Spanish trip a long time ago. Um, so yeah, just a, a great opportunity, hoping to get, not a ton of kids. I don't think we'll get like a huge group, but um you know, it's good to get like ten, ten to fifteen kids that would be interested in going.
Is this for any kids?
Anybody, um, anybody, yep, high school. I, I am limited, limiting it to high school just because I worry about taking middle schoolers overseas by myself. Um, and that's somebody who has a middle schooler at home, so what did you say?
Do we worry about taking them to Rivoli across?
Yeah, no, and uh I also am a high schooler that I, I was nervous about spending. But um.
Are you letting these kids before, like making sure that they're not gonna like?
No, I mean.
Run away.
Yeah, honestly, I've never had an issue. I've never ever had an issue. And I know Greener's taken kids with EF before as well. They're really great. I don't know how their international um security works, but when we did our domestic trips, they actually had somebody walking the hallways all night long to make sure nobody was leaving their bedrooms. We also were in, we were in New Jersey, so the kids are not, there's no workout.
Their, their theory is they want chaperones to be well-rested. And so they take care of security and it is costly. It looks costly, but they jam-pack the days. Like, I was ready to cut my own feet off by the time we were done.
It's true. Yeah, they.
You would not do that to yourself on vacation.
That's quite the sales pitch.
They wear you out.
And I think.
Is the chaperone cost the same as the kid?
So for adults, it is uh fifty-two hundred. Um, now with every, every six, with six, every six, we get an additional chaperone, like included in the price. Um, so if we were to have, you know, more than a set number of kids show up, then we could um have a chaperone go for free. But typically, um, adults just come along for fun. I've had three adults on my New York City trip. Um, Sarah, Shari Nika and um Schultz, Bill Schultz.
And in the past, did you do any sort of um help?
Like fundraising?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we've done with various success. I always tell the kids it's, it's kind of on them, how much they wanna fundraise. Um, a lot of times kids and their families are like, if we're good to pay that, we don't really, you know, feel the need to, to sell chocolate bars. Um, one of my girls that signed up for my Italy trip, which didn't end up happening, um, sold like fifteen hundred dollars worth of chocolate bars um to help pay for her trip. So like, it's just as much as they wanna get and I'm willing to do anything and everything to help them go. Um, cause I know it is expensive, but um it's a really cool opportunity for them and one that they might not get. I didn't travel overseas until I was almost thirty, so uh that would, it's.
Quick question, Ms. McGuire.
On record, on record, I'm thirty-four years old. Thank you, Jeff.
Wow.
Um.
Is it for the kids going in, like so, since it's summer, so going in to ninth through twelfth? Or the ninth through twelfth, you've just finished that year? So can your kids who have already graduated go?
Um, I, I, so if the prices for children, children, students under twenty. So like if I have a kid who's a senior this year that wants to go next summer, um, you know, assuming that would be okay, I'm fine with that. Um, and yeah, usually the, the, the kids that I get on these trips are just great. It's, I've, I have nothing but great travel experiences with kids now, but.
It's just number one question we get for all summer programming. Is, is it the grade they're going into or the grade they just completed?
Yeah, I, I will probably just to try and use numbers, I will probably, if approved, pitch this to eighth grade seniors and just kinda see.
Move to approve.
Have you looked at it, Scott?
They, they do, so EF has scholarship programs for kids that they can apply for. I can't do it for them um as the tour leader, but they as travelers. Kind of, and they do monthly payments. They make it, they try to make it as affordable.
Okay, we had a motion to approve. We had a second. We're in discussion. Um, if anyone's wondering why she's coming here for approval, there's this twenty-year-old policy that requires board approval for extended uh trips. Um, you might wanna look at that. I feel like admin could have probably approved this and, and it, so I'll look, I'll work on that policy.
I love being here, though.
But that.
Was it brought up in policy? Cause at one point it might have been more of a liability where EF assumes.
I don't know. It's literally dated two thousand and four. So um, so we may, I've, we'll, we'll look at the policy, so.
Sounds like a fun trip.
Yes. Any other discussion?
Thanks for putting it together.
Yes.
Okay, those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, you are.
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you. That's okay. I made two posters.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.